Excuse me.
No. These don't have your signature on them.
Okay, well maybe we're just as wrong here then.
So how did your moving system turn off?
I don't know what?
Your moving system turned off.
It to where you want it to?
Got money. I turned it off last night because Franklin.
Alright Cheryl, we can get started in about thirty seconds.
Yeah, it's coming through.
Go ahead, you have the show if you want.
Doesn't really...
Not that I can tell. Make place except for we get dirt, but ditch, main ditch is a little good.
Oh really, just coming down in the water?
Yeah.
Oh look at these Franklin, when they all have them in a minute. No, really.
Well go ahead, we can have you one.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's like floating in the river. Alright, it is one thirty. First on the agenda is Tom Rauzer with the Preservation Act and seeing none.
And we three saw him at lunch and he is not feeling well and will not be here this afternoon. But he wanted us to be sure to have you put him on the one thirty agenda for next Monday for the Coalition of Concerned Citizens, that's what he said, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, we don't have anything on next Monday. Well, we have very little in the morning, so if it's okay, I'll put him down at ten fifteen.
We don't know.
Okay, if not, he can always give a call.
Okay.
And um...
I guess as long as he's there, he's there, okay?
Okay. Alright, we have about thirteen minutes till our next appointment in the public comment. Alright, so we will have John Rauzer here in just a few minutes. Alan?
Yes, um, earlier this morning or on the state tax lease thing, was that discussed this morning? You know, where for the taxpayers, the state?
You mean for their office space?
Yes.
Nope, it wasn't. We have not set up an appointment that I'm aware of yet with them. So no, we haven't discussed that any further.
Cause um, cause I guess this weekend I was reading one of the papers from the state and it was mentioned, do we pay? Does the county pay their taxes directly or is it, or are they paid from our taxes that the county sends to the state? How are they paid their weekly, monthly payroll?
I, uh, under the Department of Revenue, it's not county, but I don't know what the structure is though. Or that, that might be a good question for Judy Tice.
Cause then, cause then what I was reading brought up a couple of issues and I was kinda curious, I don't know, maybe I'm in the wrong department. But does the county, we send all of our tax money to the state that we collect? Is that how we, for property, for other than income tax? But like registration, property?
Some of it yes, not all of it, no.
Okay, how could I go about getting a copy of exactly? The taxation of Broadwater County, how it's distributed?
Yeah, Department of Revenue would be the best first stop.
Is there any place local that I can?
You could talk to Tracy or Jen upstairs.
Okay.
And if you, if you wanna go to their boss, it's Judy Tice and she isn't telling up. So either one that works for you.
Okay.
Alright, John Rauzer, we're a little ahead of schedule, you wanna come on in?
If you're ready, I am.
You betcha, John Rauzer, Fair Board Updates and Centerville Cemetery.
Alright, thanks for letting me be here today. Uh, just wanna let you know that of course this year is the fiftieth anniversary of the fair in the rodeo. So that's a lot of, lot of years of history going on there and our theme is fifty years of being dazzled by the fair. Lot of positive things there, just um, wanna let you know, one of the things that we've done out the fairgrounds is uh, just recently was we poured a thirty by fifty slab that we are gonna cover our tent with or put our tent over top of rather than rent a dance floor and everything like that. Each year we use about four hundred hours of our budget to rent a dance floor just for the one night and this cost us right at four thousand dollars and thank you to Vogels and Big B and Nate Brown at Badger Materials for donating some of the materials and supplies and the labor. So we did a really good job of getting that done and one of our goals is later on is to um, get a cover, a permanent cover similar to what's like at Heritage Park, that's one of our goals and didn't know whether it'd be possible, like if out of our two mills each year, if we had some left over out of that two mill budget at the end of the year, we could maybe generate or create a CIP fund just to do that. I don't know whether it's legal or what, but I just wanted to, you know, throw that out as an idea and we're gonna look at some grants to get that covered on and just to improve the fairgrounds, everything like that.
Excellent, on that CIP, John, it's, it's actually done in other counties quite commonly. And leftover money instead of the use or lose it scenario. Other counties have departments put it into leftover money into CIPs. And what that does is it creates a partnership between the county and those departments to actually be more frugal and budgetarily conscious because they need to keep that money. So if you just write us a quick letter that you would like to keep that money and start a CIP, we can go ahead and, and look into that groundwork for you.
Okay, that sounds good. And now that, that's one thing that we would like to do is just, you know, do a couple of different things out there and do that. Another thing that we have done, or the fair board's working on is, and in conjunction with the rodeo club, um, we're working on getting a website, we're gonna call it TownsendFairgrounds.com and at that website, you'll see what's going on off the fairgrounds every week, you can look at the calendar. We're actually gonna have it available to where you can actually reserve the 4H building or the whole Broken Barn, livestock barn, fair, rodeo arena if that's what you wanna do and we'll have the fee schedule set up on that, do all that. There's a few glitches that we got going on right now, but we're working through that as far as fair board. We're gonna, fair board's gonna manage it, but we're also gonna have, you know, the rodeo club be able to put some good ideas into that as well and we're, whenever we have a meeting, fair boards or rodeo clubs represent it well and give us some ideas and info on that, so. I'm looking forward to that, we're also, you know, anytime the 4H building's used, we have to have additional or the renter has to have additional insurance. And I was able to find some pretty reasonable, what they call special event insurance and we're gonna have three different websites, links to websites where the person can go and just uh, get that special event insurance and do that. Um, I recently had, we had an event, the fairgrounds are over Memorial Day weekend and the special event insurance, which covers two million dollars in liability, costs a hundred twenty-five dollars for the weekend. So it was pretty reasonable to do that. Where I know, if you go through like your homeowner's insurance to get that special event insurance or that rider and everything, it can cost you anywhere from five to eight hundred dollars just for that weekend, for a weekend's use. So we're looking at different avenues to help it, make it, make the 4H building more available for use and not quite cost prohibitive to do that, so. I think that's about it on fair board, um, I guess thank you for appointing me again. I think I say thank you for appointing me to another three-year term.
Our pleasure.
Okay, um, and then on the Centerville Cemetery, um, well, was it last spring, spring of two thousand twelve? Um, the commission contacted 4H council to see if we'd be willing to kinda help take care of the Centerville Cemetery as a, um, I guess a community service, so to speak. And we weren't able to do anything in two thousand twelve, but this spring, May fifth, uh, about twenty of the sixty families involved in 4H met out there and we cleaned as much as we could. I think we put, took out four pack uploads of trash and garbage and old shrubs, trees, whatever, and kinda got it cleaned up. Uh, one of the concerns that we had as we were going through everything is, I mean, it's a very old cemetery and there's some of the graves and markers that are really hard to see. But in the northeast corner, um, I guess if you, if you can visualize the Centerville Cemetery right out by the mill, um, the mill owns property on, beyond the east side and the north side. And in the northeast corner, there, there's a lot of sawdust and that is blown in over the years and, and I know it's probably covering up some grave markers and, and graves and whatnot. We're not sure how to go about kinda trying to clean that up. But we have been in touch with, um, Our White Timber and they made the comment that if, um, we could get the funding to like repair, replace the fence, maybe their, their ideas, maybe a snow fence on that northeast corner to try to help stop the, the sawdust from being blown in there. They'd be willing to provide labor to do that. And so I know it's, the Centerville Cemetery is owned by the county and whether or not there's a funding available for improvements as such, I guess that's up for you folks to decide on that. But I guess between the 4H council and 4H families and Our White Timber will, will, willing to try to keep improving it and, and doing that. And I know there's recently an individual buried in two thousand eleven out there, so I mean, it's been there for several years. I think the oldest grave that we found was eighteen forty-three, so.
Wow.
So it's very, a lot of history there and, and so that's, that's what I got on the Centerville Cemetery, unless you have some questions.
Where's the records after that?
Well, it's in, it, I don't know whether it's in the courthouse, but I know over at the museum there, the Historical Museum Franklin, there is. Yep, yep, there is, so. And in fact, mother-in-law works over at the Historical Society there and she brought me a copy of all of that, but there are the records there and, and I believe Shubbers did some re-surveying of the property here a couple of years ago too. I'm not sure exactly the dates or the times or anything like that. And, and so, but, but I was, I was gonna call Mark Hummerson, you know, and, you know, kind of visit with him, but I wanted to, I guess, give you guys the update on what we've done so far and then how we wanna proceed. You know, just to let you know that Our White Timber's willing to help with some of the maintenance, you know, and caretaking and all so on that, so.
Fantastic.
And we, we plan on, 4H council and community plans on, you know, going out there at least once a year, uh, usually probably in May of every year. We tried doing it in mid-April and we got six inches of snow, so we decided not to do that that day, so we rescheduled.
That's what brought the snow, so thank you.
That's right, exactly, exactly, we needed something for some moisture.
That's right.
So.
There is a member of Rotary too who has a special place in her heart for this cemetery and would like to start doing some work out there as well, so maybe we can combine some forces.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, no, we, we trimmed back some, there's, you know, like I guess if you look at the shrubbery out there, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, drought resistant type brush bushes out there, but they had grown over the, the graves, markers and everything, so we just, you know, trimmed them back and everything so you could see the grave marker, but the bushes are still there, so they should be thriving now with the little bit of trimming that we did and cleaned up the trash and everything.
Fantastic.
It seems like there's a lot of years that it probably hadn't been done, so there was a lot to do and so, but a lot of hands make quick work out of it, so, so it worked out well.
Absolutely, thanks for doing that.
You bet, so no problem there, any questions, any other questions?
I have a question about the fairgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, quite a few people who travel through, especially during rodeo season, like to stay at the fairgrounds. I know this is more of a rodeo issue, but, um, will there be an opportunity for them to reserve parking places and boarding for their horses for overnight at the fairgrounds, do you think?
Um, I think that's probably a possibility, that'd be, you know, like as far as boarding the horses and everything, I think, I think you, we, you know, if any referrals, you, you know, have them contact John Walsh, who's president of the rodeo club right now.
Okay.
And he'd be the one to, I mean, we have the facility there and I'm sure they can figure out a fee scheduler.
They've worked really well with him the last couple of years.
Yeah, 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 so, I mean, every, you know, we, we're working together on everything, so making it work.
That's very cool.
So, on that.
And happy birthday.
Yeah, fifty years, you bet, so, alright. And, um, oh, just on that note, you know, Thursday, July twenty-fifth, there is a free concert that, um, thanks to the rodeo club for doing a lot of the groundwork, we are able to get some sponsors to have uh, Western Underground, who is Chris Lenu's band, uh, we were able to hire them and get them booked for that day. So seven thirty, July twenty-fifth, free concert, everybody's welcome and invited to attend, so.
Wonderful.
We got that all set up and so, so we're getting excited about it, getting ready to go, preparing.
Absolutely, any questions or comments Franklin?
No, I think I answered everything pretty well there.
Okay.
I guess we could do, your group or kinda get an idea with the fencing, some of that stuff we run there, so if, uh,
Okay.
when it gets into this budget time, if we're gonna do anything on that, we'd have some idea of that.
Mm-hmm, okay, alright, so should I contact Mark and visit with him and see what his thoughts are and then we work on some estimates, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, alright.
Hey John, would you pull Mike Myers into that as well?
Okay.
He's been going out there and doing a little bit of cleanup.
Oh, okay.
Every week as well, you and Jerry.
Okay, okay.
And so that he would probably be one that.
Be, okay.
Would be the resource.
Okay, okay, yep, I will do that. Okay, so maybe when I talk with Mark at Our White Timber there, I'll just have Mike, maybe invite Mike along and we'll get together and come up with a plan.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, John.
You bet, alright, see ya.
Alright, so July twenty-fifth, seven thirty concert for everyone. Two forty-five, one forty-five, there are next appointment in, hey Steve, come on in. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule, so if you wanna come on in, we can go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that counter on the Thursday?
Yes. We're gonna call Doug Down as well. Thanks, we need to add him here. What is Charles or Mel or Bed?
Nine two one five would be one of them. Nine two one nine, is everybody busy?
Hey, this is Laura, who's there?
It's yours.
Yeah, it is.
Hello? Alright, nobody's listening.
Madam Chair, I saw Doug, as I was leaving my office, headed the opposite direction when I was heading this way, so.
Alright, I'm just gonna run upstairs and I'll just leave a sticky note for whenever they're off the phone.
Have you got one who's got her mail? Yeah?
Anne, I have a question, somebody asked me. Does your pen just record when you've got it in your hand or no? It records all the time?
Okay. He's on the phone and will be down as soon as he's done.
Is there a lot of people there?
Yep, yeah. Yeah, probably three quarters full. You know, this one.
Ooh, three, four, three down the south end of town, a little from there too, I think there must be.
Yeah, I've gotta deliver two of them. They got homes already in the White House. The third one, so just somebody called on today. I guess the, um, what do they call, the irrigation ditch people burned the trailer down. So they might replace it.
Four, two at this point.
Spring ditch, kinda.
Low ditch, yeah.
Yes.
Been unlucky for a while, it's, it was replacing the one that burned down last year. They had one, yeah, in his yard caught on fire there, you know? Burned down, so he got that one to replace it and had burned down before he could apart. I had to see my dad, he had a gray area, he was, you know, in his place. But they're gonna try to take care of it.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Yeah, I got you. That might be, that might work a little better. Oh yeah. Yeah. I think I went out there to drop some ashes off. I knew the house had his actually, so I dropped his ashes. I thought, why can't you drag the one that burned down to the yard out there and park it? Kinda got to look in there, there's something else going on.
Stepped down? Oh, no, I, I thought I, you know, the, uh, spending some time next door. No, you're right, I didn't get to. But I guess now there's a few more of us, so, yeah, so there's gonna be a large group. Probably get our own facilities over there. Absolutely.
Maybe they ask us that you pay the gas for the, yeah.
More than.
Yeah, well, that sounds nice.
I have a question. Oh, yeah, that's just totally, I need to ask Tammy some questions about that one. So I am excited.
Yeah, that is a planned burn, yes, but it's like on that one all day, yeah.
Two days.
Oh, that's still smoking.
I think they got it down.
I think they did?
Yeah. Half the size of that table or quarter the size of the table.
Yeah, I just wanna know how much is in the fund. I was looking at the number to see if it's fine. We have four hundred, but I just want to know.
It's only close, no?
This has been a whole state, so.
It's covered in there, I think it was. Well, they said generally it blows. So they're counting them out?
Yeah.
And then I think it probably wouldn't have been bought too.
And they were out there spraying on the piles and lots of dirt. And we were, right, and they got, on the other side of the golf course, it was a bit down, a match of glue.
So they don't make much smoke?
Not a lot, not much.
Hot fire, huh?
Yeah, it's really hot, flames, we can leave them twenty, thirty degrees here. And it was hot, I remember it was driving with. So that would have been a grown bird here. Question here, do we, uh? Pay this off for spraying the right ways in the highway, do you believe?
Um, I don't know, which one is that?
Oh, we can, it says spraying noxious weeds along State Highway in Roderick County.
That would be for the, it looks like for the spraying stuff, chances are that is reimbursed through a grant or an MOU. And if you want, you're more than welcome to ask Scott the details.
Yeah, that's how it used to work, the, the state, you contract with the state, I mean, the county would pay the contractor, but the state would reimburse.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but, but check with Scott, make sure that's what he wants to do, that's what he wants to do.
Hey Doug, come on up.
Sorry about that, I was on the phone call.
What's that?
I was on the phone call.
Yes, we know you were working, thanks. Alright, we have Steve Saltzman, Tax Forgiveness for Goose Bay Trailer. Did you want to mention anything to start or just be here for reference?
Well, I just had a, I was off on Friday and I had, my office had about three phone calls. And I just kinda wanted to catch everybody up to date. I had a list of twelve, uh, mobile homes that were all out at Goose Bay from the Department of Revenue that they didn't have a moving declaration on. Um, I'm not sure exactly what happened to all of them, that's what we're trying to figure out. I sent a letter to these twelve people and told them that they, uh, moving deck hadn't been done. And by Montana law, it has to be done so we can keep track of these trailers, know where they're going, what's happened to them. Um, we had three of them call back in on Friday and I'm not sure which ones you dealt with and which ones you did.
Well, some of them are up here because they didn't know where they were going.
Okay.
Cause they don't have a final destination.
Yeah.
But only like two, I think.
Yeah, well, one of them, one of them was the one we're dealing with, was, it was, uh,
Lyman.
Called in and, uh, he got the letter and he said, well, I sold it and Melissa dealt with him. He said, I don't know who you sold it to, and in the conversation, um, Steve's name came up and, and she said, oh, so you do know who you sold it to? And, and she asked for his phone number, he wouldn't give it to her. So, uh, I'm not sure, you know, he just hung up on her and didn't wanna talk anymore. The other one, um, that called in, there was, uh, Donald Bannick, who has, uh, had a, actually he came into the office, he had a bill of sale that he gave to Steve, um, for his trailer.
That's a, that's a Mountain View.
Pardon me?
That's at Mountain View. He had, I'm pretty sure he came in and got the moving permitted, did he not?
No.
Cause he came in and told me he got everything at the county squared away.
No, his taxes are still due and there was no moving deck on that one. Um, the other one was, uh, it was, uh...
I thought you said he came in to talk to you guys?
No, nothing, nothing's done.
Back in Moose Town?
Yep. No, what he told, I didn't, I didn't talk to him, but what he told the gals in my office, he said that, uh, that you were told the taxes... that you were told the taxes weren't paid and you would be responsible.
That was, that was the first one, that was before the taxes came out, so I know what it was.
That was one of the first ones that was sold.
Yeah, so there's, I didn't even run into a tax problem with these ones yet, but doesn't matter, if I have to pay taxes.
That could have been because the taxes didn't come up to them to me. Right. Um, the other one, and I'm not sure about this one, it was, uh, Dawn and, uh, what was her name? And I'm not sure if it, if you did it or if someone else did it, she said they just, um, demolished the trailer and put it in the dumpster.
Yeah, we did some of those.
And she's, she got the letter, um, that the, it was John, John Hartman. Um, yeah, but, uh, I went over and talked to the Department of Revenue and, and according to state law, if the, if the trailer gets moved even an inch, it has to have a moving deck. If it's even moved from one lot to the other or from the lot to the dumpster, it still has to be a moving deck. And there was none on that one. I have a invoice that came in for Steve that where he paid twelve hundred dollars in solid waste. I don't know if that was one of this one or not.
Oh, I'm sure, there was...
Alice Hartman was her name there.
I didn't, I obviously wasn't gonna get a moving deck for when we smashed up.
Yeah. Yeah, the, according to the Department of Revenue, they won't take it off the taxes, tax bill unless there's a moving deck or this lady has to provide some proof that it's been destroyed.
Well, I think they're gonna sign something. I'm pretty sure that name sounds familiar, but I did some of them, I don't know.
Yeah.
But there was some that we just, I had my dozer out there, my maniacs and...
Yeah. Oh, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure. It says, this is just a, a solid waste fee that she paid twelve hundred dollars, it says for two, um, two disposal of mobile homes.
Well, that was dumpsters too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's still two up there. I, we hauled through the dump, we smashed some up and, uh, they weren't movable, you know.
Yeah.
And then dumpsters up the walls over there. And I set a bunch of it on fire and got bit off for that. And I had a burn permit, but then the BOR came down and informed me, I can't get a burn permit for the, for government ground. I said, well, it's got this address on it and everything, and they gave it to me, so that was a one-shot deal, there was no more burning. But anyway, I know that the one, the Bannick one, it's at, uh, Mountain View now. That was the very first one we did. And I, I thought, he came in and told me he talked to you guys and he came in, a bunch of people, I don't remember who it was. That was the very first one, that was before any of them started going out of there, so.
Yeah.
There's some taxes due on it, I'll just take care of it because I've already got it set up over there at Mountain View.
All right, yeah, if you can give an address on it.
It's, yeah, I forget. Yeah, they're, the new owners were, I told them to come over and talk to you guys, but they probably haven't yet. But we will, they will, I'll just go, I forget what number it is. Or it's at Mountain View.
But of the, out of this list of twelve that we sent out, we've got five of them that have been taken care of, so there's still seven, um, that...
I know a couple might be here because we didn't know where they were going, so we just pulled them in there. One would be Sharon Walkers, is there Sharon Walker on there?
There's a David Walker.
That's one.
Sixty-one, I read.
That one probably gonna go to the dumpster, so.
Okay. Yeah, cause any of these, they, they need to have a moving deck or the Department of Revenue is just gonna keep putting them on the tax bills even though they know they're all...
Well, I'm talking to Sharon, she'll probably be gone. Uh, she owns the POA. I just hauled it out there because I know, but, I mean, we do so much work and everything, so. Just pull it down, they're sitting out there, I don't know what's gonna happen to it because it's really, it's in pretty good shape, but it's so old, it's not much use.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I looked to the list, I could go with my secretary and see if there's any of those three that are there that have a...
Were those moved out without any moving decks?
Some were, because I was just bringing them to town because we were, we didn't know where they were gonna go. I mean, the problem is, you, you get a moving deck to bring it to town, we don't have an address, what do we say, the spud seller, you know, I mean, they want to know where the taxes are going. So there's no place...
Yeah, or if it's going to a different county, we're different owner.
Right, but there is no owner on them right now because they're just sitting there looking for places people to buy them, you know. So we didn't get moving desks because you can't, they're gonna want an address, we've gone through this, you know. So, well, it's gonna go storage for now and then, that turns into a whole other ballgame. And then they want, well, it's gonna be on the tax rolls, it's gonna be off, and then a week later you're going to get another moving deck because somebody, Bozeman bothered or something, you know.
The problem with not getting a moving deck is it goes back in these people's name until the moving deck until the moving deck gets to the Department of Revenue. That's what, that's when the...
One of them is probably gonna get...
Mobile homes makes them so hard to track.
One of them's probably gonna be on there that we're gonna be moving in a week or so, so we'll become the moving deck on that one. Let me see if I can bring the bill, if it's a few that we're used to interfere with. Japman Welch, I got a moving permit for that one.
Which, where's that one? Yeah, that one's, that one's marked up.
Oh, okay.
It's for taking care of, and this one's taking care of.
That might be one of ours. That might be the one that's still sitting down, there's that load of Bozeman.
See, and the Department of Revenue doesn't, doesn't usually keep a VIN number.
Well, yeah, you can't find them on...
On a mobile home, yeah, half of them you can't find. So then you're up against trying to match the year and the make and length and the width and mobile homes are just hard to, hard to keep track of.
This one here, I think some of ours is sitting down there by the spud cellar. Lee. That's the one that might go down. Out to toss and take care of the one that got burned up right now. Ditch crew. So, yeah, if you want to cut me a copy, that I'll go and check against my records and figure out which ones I gotta come take care of.
All right. We can do that. But, uh...
All these are gonna be like one year ago. I mean, the issue here is since oh eight, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh...
I can tell most of them I got stuck with because the taxes came out late.
Right. Well, yeah, they didn't come out late, they come out in May every, in, in the year.
Oh, I thought they came out in June though.
They're, no, they're opposite, but they, uh, real estate taxes come out in November, mobile homes come out in May.
Okay, whatever it was, most of the deals were done before the taxes came out.
Yeah.
We just know, I mean, I can take a year. It's been almost a five-year one, it was a shocker.
Yeah, and the one on that, I was, uh, I checked into the statute if there, um, mobile homes should be stricken off the books once they're five years delinquent. And on this one, I had it, I had it, it had a two thousand eight year on it. So that should be, that should have, should have been stricken off. We sent out delinquent notices to every mobile homeowner last week. Um, I checked into the process of collecting delinquent mobile home taxes and, uh, basically, it's gonna be a lot of work for the Sheriff's Department. It's, uh, there's a bit of execution that needs to be done. I might as well give the Sheriff's Department all of the information and they go out and, and serve these writs and give them a certain amount of time to pay, ninety or a hundred and twenty days. If there's no payment, then they're stickered and, uh, when they pay, they actually pay the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department brings some money into us, so, uh, that's just something that hasn't been done, I think. I couldn't even tell you, I think probably going back eight, ten years, I'm not sure. There's something to start on, this is not, so as far as this one, I think the, the two thousand eight should definitely be taken off. I had all this together and got a little phone and didn't have time to bring it all around. I think there was two thousand nine. I think he paid the ten and the eleven and twelve for due. Does that...
Well, he paid, according to what I see, he paid nine.
He paid nine?
Only, he skipped eight, paid nine and paid the half, paid cents.
Haven't paid since, so it would be by August, this year, ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen, better do.
And this is one of the trailers that went to Bozeman?
Mm-hmm, this is the one that went to Bozeman.
Okay, and it's one of the ones that went without the moving deck?
Right.
Is that, okay. Now, um, if they're not supposed to be moved without the moving deck, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but that kind of ties our hands as far as being able to do anything, taxes, right?
As far as collecting?
Yeah, we can, we can't do anything other than collect them.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
This is, you know, any time the county can partner with the business, um, it saves taxpayers money, bottom line. Um, I think what you've been doing out there, uh, if you weren't doing it, it would have cost the mon, the county a lot of money to contract for somebody to do it. So I, I absolutely support, uh, working with you. Um, I don't know how we can as far as the taxes go.
Well, I thought, last week we discussed the fact that they had to be taken out there by the deadline.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And the thing is, is, it's my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but had it been moved within the county, we would still be able to do something. Since it was moved out of the county without that moving declaration, it kind of ties our hands to be able to do anything. Um, however...
So you can't go after the guy that owns the taxes. You haven't been able to get since oh eight, so I get stuck with what you're saying.
Ken, is there anything we can do legally, uh, at this point? He doesn't own it anymore, is what I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what the legal ramifications then that would be, we'd probably have to talk to Carla and see, um, exactly what can be done there. Once it's, once it, before it's even moved, the taxes should be paid. If they're not paid, by the time it's moved, it's illegally moved. I don't know what the fines are for that, I don't know if that's the place you want to go.
There's no fines if you don't, only way you get a fine is if they catch you, it's a hundred and eighty bucks. That's why I wanted to have it moved, because I had to have it moved anyway. So I just to get it, I had so many to do, ain't no way I could screw around anymore with it, you know. Cause we tried to get, tried to get him to take care of it, cause he said it was taken care of and then obviously wasn't. And so we tried and finally said, well, it's gotta go, I mean, they all gotta go. So, and the people that needed to live in it, so I just drug it up there, cause it's a hundred and eighty dollar fine, it can be OT if you get caught without a, a debt. So, not the end of the world, but, well, you know, obviously don't wanna do it, but I mean, roll the dice and go with it.
So we could certainly pursue this with Carla, see if there's anything we can do to collect those, those taxes at this point. Um, the other thing we can do is, is like Doug said, take off the oh eight, since that shouldn't have appeared in the first place. The other thing we can do is you are not the one who didn't pay your taxes. Is it right that you get saddled with the late fees and the, um, penalties? I don't think so. Um, we do have the ability still at this point, if I'm not mistaken, Doug, to waive the penalties and interest um, on the taxes due. So that would be two hundred and thirty for the late fee and two thirty-five for oh eight.
Yeah, I'd have, I'd have to go check the exact amounts, but...
Roughly four sixty, so we can take off that thirteen hundred. Um...
Yeah. That sound, that sounded pretty close.
Okay. Um, any other, any other thoughts, Franklin or...
No, I guess you're just doing what you find out.
I'm not sure as far as collecting those, I don't know. Have to check with, with Carla and even Brendan and see. I don't know how much ground you have to stand on. When the trailer's in a different county, they, you kind of lose your...
Might tell me, I should pay it, but if he doesn't pay it, there's... It sounds like you didn't have any teeth to begin with then. You guys don't have any teeth to begin with.
The, while there are, they just send the new taxes.
But now I get stuck because of that, I don't think that's fair at all. Cause you guys should have done something since oh eight and you didn't, so now I get stuck with the nine hundred dollar tax bill. I think that's crap, all the taxes I already pay in this county and all the stuff I do that you guys don't collect from other people and I get stuck paying them, that doesn't seem right. I, granted, I moved it without a permit, but I didn't have much choice. You know, other than that, then the government's gonna slap them with a big injunction, they sent them all these letters out, so between a hard rock and a, a rock and a hard spot on the whole situation. I mean, I think you should go after the guy that didn't pay them, cause you've been on the phone with him since oh eight, from what I understand now. They've been trying, they've been talking to Lyle, from, according to what they said up there, they knew exactly who it was when I went up there with this problem.
Who's Lyle?
The guy that owned the trailer. Lyle Hartman.
Lyle Hartman?
Hartman. They knew the minute I went up there, what the situation was, I didn't know.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that, it is our job to collect the taxes. It's also your job as an owner to make sure they're paid before you move the trailer. Like now that the trailer's moved, we've lost any...
But if it would have stayed there, if it would have stayed there, what would have happened? If it, if it wouldn't have moved it, what would have happened? Government would have come in and smashed it and you didn't have nothing too. And that's what the government's gonna do, is just take them to the dump or smash any ones that were left. So you'd have been out everything then too. At least this way you get, you know, if I pay a year on it, you get at least the last year. Any of them that would have stayed there, they would have charged, gone after the people with a big fine they had lined up, you know. And then they would have just been condemned and there would have been nothing to nobody.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they, what they were gonna do to them, if they...
Well, that's what the letters were, you know.
Yeah.
Basically, they get a big fine every day they're sitting there and then they'll condemn them.
And then they condemn them? Yeah. We could check with Carla and see if we have any, any way to, uh, go after this apartment. I mean, we have, we have his, his last address, my letter went to and, and he answered it.
Lose your gears or something?
Sometimes a letter from a lawyer's enough to get somebody at least to, to write their check.
Well, the thing is though, today I gotta figure out how to get, so these people can get their taxes going in the other county.
Now, Doug, if, uh, if Steve were to pay those, uh, back taxes for this particular trailer and they did decide to go ahead and pay a portion of that or all of it based on a letter from Carla, would there be a way to refund that to Steve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if, if we do our side of this with what we can at this point, there's a possibility that you could be made right or rider. Um, but as far as, as right now, our hands are tied as far as being able to, to do anything more. Um, we, we can take off the oh eight for the MCA
Yeah.
and we can take off the penalties and, um, the interest because it wasn't you that didn't pay your taxes. It's not as much, but maybe with this other we can get to get more.
Whatever, it is what it is. I mean, every time we turn around, they're, we're getting dug out anyway, I don't know how anybody can stay in business anymore, to be honest with you. Doug, it doesn't matter where we turn, we get hit, we get hit so hard with taxes this year again. So, go ahead, just keep on doing it, because then there won't be no jobs. I mean, it's stupid, I'd have to pay somebody else's taxes because you guys didn't collect them. You guys were paid to collect them by us. I'm a taxpayer that paid you to collect those taxes and you didn't do it. I'm not getting on you personally, I'm just saying, uh, if you look at the big picture, that's the way it is.
This is something that, uh...
How many, how many dollars roughly are out there? You have a rough idea that you guys haven't collected on these, since you sent all these letters out?
Um... I, I ran a report last week. Trying to, trying to think what the amount was, it seemed like it was around two hundred thousand on mobile homes.
I think that's something, the county's going broke and we got ten thousand.
That's, that's taxes, you're delinquent, that's, uh...
Right.
Once, once they're...
I pay taxes on like nine trailers right now myself, every year.
Mm-hmm. And once, you know, the, each year, the, there should be a process where the sheriff is involved and goes out and he's sticking with the mobile homes. I don't think it's, I know we started it when Judy was the crafter, and we got about halfway through, and the officer that was in control of it would call to do something else, and that's where it stopped. And Judy never picked it up again, Karun never picked it up again, so now we're starting over.
Well, nothing else, at least the county's going to get some more money out of it. Nine hundred for me right off the bat, I guess.
Well, I can, like I said, I'll check with Carla, I'll check with Brendan, see what...
Yeah, the thing is, I mean, as far as, he assured me it was all taken care of anyways, I mean, basically, I mean, according to everything I told last week, there's nothing I can do, you know, for it, so. I'll still come down here and get it taken care of, but, so I try it, so.
One thing we should do to make sure that the late fees and penalties is covered as have it as a motion in the minutes, if you are agreeable to that, Franklin.
On, on these other ones you're talking about?
On waiving the late fees and penalties for this particular trailer?
Give him any break we possibly can. Legally, I mean, that's the only thing, I guess, if we told him we didn't have to pay those taxes. Legally, well, I guess that's what Carl was supposed to give us the answer for. If that's the case, somebody else say, well, I'm not going to pay either, I mean, I'm forgetting every break you can possibly get there within the law. But, and on the same token, and I mentioned it last week, this is brought up, all these that are shown, I say, get on it. Sheriff's Office can start, get that paperwork done, and they can start doing that. I mean, it isn't any different, civil papers, you know?
We started it last week, we sent them all out a delinquent notice, and gave them thirty days, and in thirty days, depending on what we work probably, and we'll...
Okay, well, that's good on that part, I know it doesn't help you any, but I guess that's the thing, yeah, definitely, interest and penalty, I said, but I don't know, and whatever else we can help him on now. But we've got to stay with it a while, we, you know, let you...
That's another thing with the, with the delinquent taxes, if the, once the rits are served, if the homeowner doesn't pay, it could go against the sheriff's bond, if those taxes aren't collected. This way that's the law reads.
It could go against the sheriff's bond.
If the sheriff doesn't follow through and serve the rits and, and collect them and sticker the homes, whatever has to be done. Like, like what happens six, eight years ago, whenever it was, when we were doing this process. And basically it stopped because the sheriff's department ran short of time to, to follow through with it. If they don't follow through, then it becomes, it goes against her bond, so. That's just something that...
Well, once it's brought up, it won't be so bad. See, now we've got all these years, so it's going to, it's going to be probably a pretty good workload for them. But once this is brought up, it's going to just be so many a year that I would think, or... And once people know about this, it's going to be a little different, too, that they...
Right, yeah.
But now this is helping you any right now.
It is a little bit, I mean, the biggest, or the bill was thirteen, we're taking off four sixty, roughly, it's making a dent. But we do need to get it in the minutes so that Steve isn't left holding that bag, too.
Well, I'll make a motion that, so you don't have to pay the interest and penalty on that particular trailer.
Yeah, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to waive the penalties and interest for the trailer previously owned by Lyle Harlem. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Right, and the oh eight, we don't need to make a motion on, because that's covered by MCA, so.
And also, of course, for them to get their record down there, these, we're going to have to have a decision quick, on, so these people can get their squared around, people in Bozeman, whether he's going to have to pay them, or...
I'm going to have to pay them days so they can get there. I'm not going to leave them hanging. They can't get insurance on the place until the taxes are paid, basically, and it's already living in it, and they're freaking out. So, whatever, today I'll come upstairs and I'll pay the, whatever it is, nine hundred some dollars, and let them know that it's cleared up, so they can get their Alton County taxes going. Because they won't, they can't get insurance on some shows of the tax bill.
With the understanding that we can recollect it, and that I think we mentioned as well, it would be, go back to you.
Okay.
And, and we will actually follow up the county attorney and see if we can get some reimbursement for you after those legal channels.
Okay.
Yeah. Steve, truly, thank you for everything you've been out there.
All right, somebody's got a question back there.
Yes?
When you said in the minutes that Lyle Hartman, now, if the lawyer's able to go after him...
Lyle Harlem?
Oh, well, whoever it was, but if he's able to go after him, he should have to pay the interest in the back stuff, all on this stuff, and, you know, the situation is, is you made the motion on the trailer, and that'll open him wide open, so where he doesn't have to pay that interest. That's, that's the only question I've got.
Did, Doug, as far as the original owner, you would still be able to collect the interest and penalties from the original owner on those taxes, even though we waived that for Steve, correct?
Yeah, the system was to show the amount for those due, but we could put it in there.
Okay, I think that's appropriate. You didn't not pay your taxes, they did, they should be paying those, in my opinion. My understanding is we just voted and moved for it to be waived for Steve.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, that's fine, it is what it is.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, we are, two fifteen has been canceled due to illness, that's Tim Ravidal, Concerned Citizens Coalition. So, we are done with mail, we do have a grant we will sign next week, and I'll get that on the agenda. And it is for in-home care services for the elderly through the Public Health Office. So, any comments, public comment?
I've got three questions.
Okay, we have a hand that went up in the back here first.
Madam Chairman, it brought up to me since last week, and all this issue with this taxes and stuff, and I started thinking about it, going, okay, now you're picking on us trailer houses, and I know where people struggle to make those taxes. How about the people in town, how about the houses in town that are delinquent on taxes? And are you going to start doing anything about that also? Because to me, in my eyes, if there's traders delinquent, there would possibly be houses also delinquent in taxes, and what are we going to do about that, too? Because I think it all should be combined to one sum.
There's, you want to explain it?
Go right ahead.
There's companies, that's all they do, is go around and pay these back taxes, and then they either end up with property in time, or the people have to pay them back, and they charge them ten percent, isn't it, ten percent? Maybe you know something about it. Anyway, they, that's how they make money on it. So, real estate and how, or property, there's people taking care of that all the time.
Okay, because I was like, if this is our revenue coming in, and we're losing it on our taxes, but what about houses, too?
Yeah, I don't know how long it goes on, before they step in, or legally. After, is it two years, or four?
Four years.
It's four years?
And they can, then they can get a, whoever pays the taxes can get a tax lien deed.
So, anyway, nothing to go for four years, but it'd be paid, you know it is. Unless it's just some, if there's any more any real estates worth something, you know, so, but that's what they do, that's those companies, that's, that's your business.
Thank you, I just have a few things for me.
Cheryl, you had a couple things?
I've got some questions. Way back in, way back in May, no, excuse me, way back in April fifteenth, I asked the commissioners and human resources for the amount of the raise that was given to the maintenance man and the solid waste, and the effective date of that raise. It's now July. It, it's only been two and a half, three months. Elaine Brayley said that in the sixteenth of May she'd take care of it, granted she's gone, might still like answers.
All right, thank you very much for your comment, we will go ahead and take this under advisement.
When can I expect an answer?
I don't have a date for you.
Who is, who is going to take care of this, so that I know I get an answer?
Go ahead and take it under advisement. Did you have two more issues?
Yes.
All right.
I asked the, I was mistaken, I thought I need to ask Doug Ellis. I got sent by a lady in his office, not Ann, not the other lady that sits next door, the other lady, and I apologize, I don't know the name. I wanted a copy of that bill for the planning board's working dinner, that ninety-five dollar bill. I got sent to, she said, see Tammy Rose, but Tammy Rose was on vacation, so see Debbie Kelly. I asked Debbie Kelly for a copy of that. She told me she didn't have any idea when she'd be able to get that for me. I want a copy of that.
Okay, Tammy is back from vacation.
Third, on, in the independent record, Friday, June twenty eighth, there was a little thing about a two to one vote, by a two to one vote, the June seventeenth email from Becky Kelly, Broadwater County Finance Officer, et cetera, et cetera. I want a copy of that email that Becky Kelly sent to the independent record.
Thank you very much.
How, how do you intend to, to see that I get this information, I'd like to have.
We'll take it under advisement, do you have a comment, someone has something to add?
The people have the right to get some answers back, and some of this has been for, I forget how many months or so. We've got to get some answers back to them.
Okay, and feel free to pursue anything you like. We'll go ahead and take this under advisement, and go ahead and...
Well, I don't think just me and the board, we, we go out there and get some answers. I mean, people are coming here for these meetings and asking these questions, so I think nothing's going to... I mean, it's...
I don't know that that's accurate, but certainly we can go ahead and take it under advisement.
Well, I guess I'm on the same boat as Cheryl, is what's, that's not an answer, what are we, what's, what's the advice to mean? Let's put it that way.
You are a commissioner, Franklin, you are privy to any of the information that Cheryl is asking for. If you would like to pursue it right now, you certainly can. Keep in mind that all of our employees are extremely busy, and do what they can as quickly as they can. They can't always get to it at that exact moment. But go right ahead and get any information you'd like, it's all in public.
Well, I know it is, absolutely.
That is something you are able to do as a commissioner. Don't need me to go ahead and take care of it for you.
Okay, and when I go and ask these people, I expect to get some answers then. I'll turn right back over to you.
I'm one-third of this commission, you're one-third of this commission, Franklin. So, you are a commissioner, you are privy to any information.
All right, thank you.
I know I have a hard time getting it, but I'll, I'll get on these questions, see what I can do. I guess that's all I can say on my part, I didn't expect. I think the people, I think it's pretty much directed to who the people were in those notices.
Yep, you're one of the commissioners, go ahead and do whatever you do, see what you want to get, and provide it to whomever you would like to provide it to. As long as it's within the confines of the law, that is definitely your purview and your responsibility. So, is there any other public comment?
I've got, got several things that I'd like to comment about, I guess, and, you know, I've, over the years, I don't know how many county commissioner meetings I've attended. The only other meeting that I ever attended that we had to have a law enforcement official at was one where the guys were also wearing boat proof vests, because they'd been threatened, wasn't a county commissioner meeting. But, you know, it's time that we work and have a little bit of civility, and get along, and do the county's business, as the independent record was talking about in, what, yesterday's paper. And I guess the first thing that I have is that, for Commissioner Slifka, is that there's some inquiring minds that are asking, at the last meeting, you read a statement as to your lawsuit and, and stuff against the other commissioners. The top of the, very top of that sheet of paper had a statement on it, Franklin, to be read at the beginning of the commissioners' meeting. So, the inquiring minds are wondering if that's one that you wrote yourself, or if somebody requested, you know, wrote it and requested you to turn that in. In last week's paper, there was a letter to the editor in there that talked about, and criticized considerably, Commissioner Obert for closing in the way she closed the meeting. I've worked with Robert's Rules of Order for, since the fifties sometime. You can close a meeting without a motion, without a second. You can adopt minutes without a motion, without a second. It's totally legal, and it's written in Robert's Rules of Order. I think that, you know, an apology is in order for that one, because of the way the letter was written, and it's totally wrong, according to Robert's Rules of Order. At the last meeting also, Mr. Ravidal was here, and he was talking about the fact that the minutes had nothing in it. I think his words were something like, there was no mention whatsoever that a hearing had ever been held, or very close to that. The minutes very clearly state that there were two hearings held. And they were recorded the way they ought to be recorded in minutes. And I know, Commissioner Slifka, you have talked about, you want more detail in minutes. From what I can gather, what you and some others around here want to have is a transcript of what went on, and minutes are not a transcript. If you have, there are even times in minutes where motions are not recorded. And I guess the one that I would point out to you is that if Commissioner Obert made a motion that you were going to buy this recording pen and, and put a hundred dollars on it, and the motion is seconded, and then Commissioner Slifka, you decide that that motion, or that the pen would cost maybe five hundred dollars, and the motion is amended to a five hundred dollar limit for the, for the pen, the minutes will show that, if you do it correctly, the amended motion by Commissioner Obert to buy a five hundred, or a recording pen of up to five hundred dollars, she gets blamed for spending the five hundred dollars, and you made the motion. That's the way minutes are recorded. Minutes do not record discussions. What they record are actions. And the, and you go back to the actions. The discussion that we have here now for public comment, legally, correctly, probably in your minutes, you would just say that public comment was taken. Okay, that's all you need in the minutes. By Robert's Rules of Order, that's what you should... That's all you need in the minutes. By Robert's Rules of Order, that's what you should record. So I think it's time that we go through a few things, and kind of work out some stuff, rather than fighting with everything that, that's going on. I think it's appalling that a draft copy of the minutes, most places won't even allow it, that a draft copy of the minutes gets in the hands of the public before they're approved. I have never, ever, in any meeting I've ever seen, seen a member of a board, or a member of a group, defer approval of the minutes until somebody that's not even a member of that group has an opportunity to comment on it. You approve the minutes, if there are things that are needed to be corrected in it, you can amend it. You can do it years later, if you find out that there was something wrong in minutes ten years ago, you can do it, there's a procedure. Okay? So, let's work at this thing, and work at conducting our county business, and let's get rid of the headlines that we're getting throughout the state. I couldn't even go paddle fishing and intake, without people talking about, to me, about what's going on in Broadwater County. I think that's appalling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Yes, Dave?
Um, I guess, uh, just for anyone who is concerned about the minutes, um, or for anyone, uh, who's interested in knowing what happens at the meetings in general, they're online now. Um, in fact, that's the next thing on my to-do list after this meeting adjournances, to upload, um, video of this meeting. So not only do you get the minutes, uh, what actions were taken, um, you get the commissioners, uh, people who spoke before the commissioners, and you get public comment. So, if you know anyone who's concerned about that, or if you're concerned about it yourself, um, they're online, and you can watch them.
Do you have the address?
Uh, yes, um, it's available on a YouTube channel called County Commission, it's a pretty generic name. And if you go to YouTube's website, and click on the Browse Channels button, on the left side of your screen, and type Broadwater County Commission, uh, the first two results you get are gonna be videos from last week's meeting.
Excellent, nicely done.
And, uh, well, this was, this was, um, County Attorney Bossy's idea. Um, and directions for accessing YouTube are also in the Broadwater Reporter.
Fantastic. Could you, um, also get those to Ernie Forie?
Yes.
Uh, he's got the community website, and you can put it on there as well.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, any other public comment?
I'll answer. When I first started to run, when people wanted me to run stuff, and my theme was, "Open Communication and Common Sense Approach to the Issues." I was in your commissioner meetings, and I had people out in the audience, just like I was, say, they call them genetic myths, they weren't happy with them. I'd say eighty percent of the people I talked to, didn't like the, the way things were going. And so that's what I've asked, where I've asked for better minutes. True, there's certain things you don't have to put, but they, they also say in the, in their rules, that the more detailed, the better. And so I guess, uh, that's basically it, and like I say, I'm sticking with open communication and common sense.
Anything else?
I got a question.
John?
Franklin, just what you just said is exactly the reason why we elected you into office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, any other public comment? All right, meeting is adjourned?
I was gonna ask, what did we talk about in that DES, uh, pro, pro commission, whatever we had? What is that again? I wanna just look at that again.
I don't know that I still have it, I'd be more than happy to make a copy and put it in your mailbox, though. You can send it electronically, but I'll make a copy for you, I think it's on my desk.
Okay, well, at this time, I wanna rescind that motion on that, till I get a chance to look at that some more.
You actually legally can't rescind a motion without a second, to rescind your motion? So the mission, motion stands. But if you would like to go ahead and get a copy, get your copy, you can read it, and we can readdress it next week.
It should be, I wanted to readdress next week.
But the motion does still stand, so we will go ahead and follow through with that. But certainly, we can readdress it and answer any questions that you have. Any other public comment? All right, um, I should clarify, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you get a second to rescind your motion, then we can readdress it. But you have to have a first and a second from the side of the motion that was approved. There's one? Okay, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, complicated. All right, any other public comment? Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.